Okay, call the meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is with the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation. Pastor Todd Forrest of Fountain Hills Christian Center. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you, Mayor Kavanaugh. Thank you, councilmember. Shall we pray? Lord, I thank you that you are the author of all wisdom, and we thank you once again for the beautiful day and this beautiful time of year and the opportunity to live in this great community, and I pray that your blessings would continue to be on our community. Bless this council as they make decisions this evening and continue to guide the direction of our community. We thank you for them, and I ask that you would give them your wisdom and that you would just allow all of us to realize that you are our source. We pray in your name, Lord Jesus. Amen.
Thank you. Roll call, please, Beth.
Councilman, Mayor Kavanaugh?
Here.
Councilmember Dickey?
Here.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Yates?
Present.
Vice Mayor Hansen?
Here.
Councilmember Elke?
Here.
Councilmember LaChee?
Here.
Okay, thanks, Beth. Uh, let's see. Okay, my report for tonight. Opening session at the legislature this week started on a positive note with Speaker Andy Tovin asking the legislature to work on restoring the cities and towns' share of state shared revenue. That's good news for us. We will keep an eye on that one. We were all pleased to hear the governor's concern and call on the legislature to fix the horrific problems in CPS system where children's safety is concerned there should be no partisan lines. Councilwoman Yates and I got the opportunity yesterday to meet some of the new executives with Republic Services, our trash company. We also discussed the possibility of some future programs with this company that they are actually offering our town. We also discussed the new community grants project that is going right, on right now. And if you go to the Republic Services website, recycling rewards, and then click on the Fountain Hills link, you can vote your points to the Fountain Hills community project that you like, and I believe they have pledged between eight and $10,000 as a grant to one of our community projects. So you get to vote with your points on which of the three projects that are there that you like the best for our community. At that same event, we both had the opportunity to network with other companies that might have something to offer for our town. Thank you. And now we will go on to the proclamation of Pony Express Day. Whereas the Pony Express played a particularly important and colorful part in the history of the West dating back between 1860 and 1861, and whereas each year the Pony Express riders are remembered with a commemorative ride by the members of the Hash Knight gang traveling from Holbrook to Scottsdale, and whereas Fountain Hills is the next-to-last stop on their track. Now therefore, January 30th, 2014 is hereby proclaimed to be Pony Express Day in the town of Fountain Hills. All town residents, visitors, or of our surrounding areas are invited to join in the festivities and dress Western to commemorate this part of our history in the West. That'll be fun. Always fun. Okay. And we will go on to our presentation, so versus introduction of the town's new part-time economic development specialist, Scott Cooper. Ken?
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council, again, I'd like to introduce Scott Cooper, who's a certified economic development specialist. He's accredited. He has considerable experience on the municipal economic development programs. He recently came to us from the private sector, but his previous experience has been with the city of Peoria, where he did similar activities and what we're asking for, as well as the, as an economic development specialist with the city of Scottsdale, and worked on a number of projects there similar to what we're looking for as well. So what I'd like to do is introduce Scott tonight, and so that everyone can see his face and the camera can see his face, so the community can take a look and know who it is. So if you have any questions of him, there he is.
Thank you very much. Mr. McCann, I appreciate that. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I was asked just to give a little brief rundown of my history, and Mr. McCann made my speech that much shorter, so I will keep it brief. I received my planning degree from Iowa State University and have over 18 years of experience in economic and business development, 14 working with municipalities, and the last four in the private sector. Most of my time in Iowa was spent running a Chamber of Commerce and an economic development organization. My focuses were turning the chamber around and business recruitment. I worked with the likes of John Deere, Guardian Glass, Amana, Car Freshner, if you've ever bought the little trees. Those were made in Dewitt, Iowa, and many small and local businesses as well. In 2002, I accepted a position with the Economic Vitality Department with the city of Scottsdale. My focus was working with companies in the Scottsdale Air Park, Go Daddy Dial Henkel, JDA Software, and of course, the auto dealerships. I was also involved with the early meetings with ASU that resulted in Sky Song. That's the ASU Scottsdale Innovation Center. In 2007, I went to the city of Peoria's Economic Development Department. There I worked on developing Class A office space, retail recruitment, and was the small business liaison. The past four years, I worked for a private company to help them expand products and their facilities, not only nationwide but worldwide. I'm very happy to be back in the public sector and working with a community like the town of Fountain Hills. It's, it's a very comfortable feeling, and it's a very good feeling, and except for the, it doesn't matter how many years, I still get nervous in front of the council just a little bit, so that's a good thing. Keeps me alert. I've always believed in six elements for successful economic development. One, creating community spirit and cooperation, capitalizing on existing resources, using a targeted business recruitment plan, the use of a business retention and expansion program, helping entrepreneurs get started, and the use of economic and demographic research, land use planning, and a long-term approach. I believe there's reason for excitement here, as every one of those elements is in our economic development plan. But even more important is the implementation strategy for that economic development plan. We have already started to aggressively address a business attraction plan, a downtown initiative, and thanks to community services, a tourism initiative. I'd like to thank the Strategic Planning Advisory Commission for a strong plan. They've done an excellent job. I very much look forward to the future in Fountain Hills, and again, I thank you for this opportunity. Thanks.
Thank you, Scott. Welcome on board.
Thank you.
Okay, and now we go to councilmember Jenny Dickey that's going to give us a report on Maricopa Association of Governments Regional Domestic Violence Council Meeting, where she sits on that committee.
Thank you. Just very briefly, we did meet on the 17th. We approved the 2013 MAG regional protocol model. That model was developed based on local and national best practices for law enforcement response to domestic violence crimes. We worked on draft goals. I do have them here, but they and then all the resources and the agendas and everything is available at the MAG website, which is W W A Z M A G dot gov. We also evaluated our past year a little bit while working on assessments to determine effectiveness. We would like to look for statistical evidence for success, decreased incidents, and more enforcement, and we have been successful by pulling all the disciplines together and raising awareness. Finally, we thanked our outgoing chair, Barbara Marshall, who's at, from the Maricopa County Attorney's Office, and we welcomed our new chair, Steve Campbell, who is with the City of Mirage Police Department. We meet every other month, so we'll be meeting on February 6th at 2:00 at MAG. All are welcome, and you can call in also if you're interested, and again, all the agendas are online.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Do we have any speaker cards, Beth?
No, Mayor.
Okay. And we will go on to a consent agenda. We have four items on the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to accept them as written?
Mayor, so moved.
And a second?
Second.
And a roll call, please.
Councilmember Dickey?
Aye.
Councilmember Elke?
Aye.
Councilmember LaChee?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hansen?
Aye.
Councilmember Yates?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
And Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Mayor 7-0.
Okay, thank you. First, on the regular agenda items is appointment of two citizens to serve on the Board of Adjustment for the period beginning February 1st, 2014 until January 31st, 2016. Okay? I'll make my recommendation appointment, and then I'd like to say just something about the, the two candidates. The first is, I would like to appoint Paul Ryan. Paul Ryan was appointed on January 3rd, 2008, to the Board of Adjustment. Paul was appointed vice chairman in 2009 and chairman of the board in 2011. Ryan is a valuable asset to the community and to the state for his contributions. I'd also like to appoint Carol Perica. She was appointed to the Board of Adjustment on February 17th, 2011, serving a one-year term fulfilling a vacant seat on the board. Carol was then appointed vice chairman after her appointment to a full term and has remained in that position since. Vice Chairman Perica enjoys participating in the local government and serving Fountain Hills, and I think Carol is here. Yes, I don't see Paul, but Carol's here. Yes, she is? Okay. So can I get a second?
Second.
Okay. And all in favor?
Aye.
Any council discussion on that? I should have asked that first. No? Okay. Thank you, Carol, for re-upping again, and thank you, Paul. We appreciate your service and all the time that you put in to the Board of Adjustment. Thank you. Item six, consideration of resolution 2014 dash zero four, adopting the town Fountain Hills Community Center operating policies. Ken?
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council, the Community Services Director has a report regarding the adoption of the center policies.
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council, you may recall that I was before you a number of months ago when we took a look at the kitchen policy and made some amendments to that. The policies that you have in for you this evening for consideration are policies that we have been following at the community center since it opened over a decade ago, with two exceptions, the one I just mentioned, which was some changes to the kitchen policy. The only other change, major change that I'm aware of was to the liquor policy a number of years ago when we decided to no longer hold the liquor license. So with those two exceptions, basically the document that you have in front of you is essentially the same with a few minor changes, such as to title of the person that's now in charge of the facility. So with that, we did take the agreement and take a look at it. We could not find any place where it appeared that the council had officially adopted the policies and procedures, so we felt like it was important to bring that forward because of that. We did also take it in front of the Advisory Commission at their December 16th meeting, and they also recommended that the council consider and approve this. Staff is also recommending acceptance of the policies and the resolution. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Yeah, I, going over it, there was just one item that I wanted to bring to your attention. It is under section four, general rental regulations, operating policies, letter M, and it says firearms, explosives, or other weapons are not allowed in the center other than those carried by a peace officer in the performance of official duties. Just from my background, being with police, I kind of remembered that police have to carry their service revolver even when they're off duty. So I contacted Captain Rodriguez, and he supplied me with the section and the MCSO regulations that clearly states that while off-duty compensated sworn personnel would take law enforcement action when observing a felony or serious misdemeanor offense in progress unless in the deputy's judgment such action would place bystanders or the deputy himself at an unacceptable risk of bodily harm for their own protection and to enable them to take appropriate law enforcement action, sworn deputies are further required to qualify with and carry or have in an immediate proximity a service weapon or an approved off-duty weapon in accordance with policy, and then he goes, goes on like that. So the captain, who is here today, who I'm sure would, would answer any questions, suggested just a wording change to a firearm can be carried by a federal or state-certified peace officer. He said that would cover it.
Okay.
So if that's okay, there's any objection to that change? Anyone need to talk to the captain about it? Is that okay? Okay? Great. Oh, yes?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
Mark, I've been approached by several restaurants and obviously people who have events in the center. Could you give a curtailed version of section 13 and how the kitchen is to operate and the, the need of a license and how this is very similar to what you had before, but it just expands on it? Yeah, section 13, you may recall, was the section that we brought back in front of you. It, it basically mirrors what is covered under the Maricopa County Environmental Health Department. There are certain requirements for our kind of a kitchen. We can allow people to utilize the kitchen. They can warm things, they can keep things cool. It's just not a food prep kitchen. If you are a licensed and insured caterer, which is what we require, that means they have to prepare the meal at an off-site that has also been inspected by and given a permit by the health department. Once that's done, they can bring whatever food they've prepared to the community center, and then again, as I stated, either keep it warm or keep it cool, so they can do everything there except for prepare the food, can't cook it, can't do those kind of things. It's really the same policy we had in place all the time. It wasn't exactly always consistently followed because there were a lot of nuances that came into effect, and there have been some changes to the law as well. So what we try to do is redefine it and also make it perhaps, I think, more easily understood by folks. So we've been requiring a licensed insured caterer all along, but we, we now added some additional language in there and kind of clarified no knives other than silverware, those kinds of things. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Councilwoman Dickey?
Thank you, Mayor. Bet you thought this was just going to be a slam dunk. On page, I think, 53, which is section 21, says broadcasting and recording. It doesn't seem like, it seems like maybe those were done with the idea that somebody might want to broadcast something for money, but it would look like, like say you had somebody come and giving a speech or something, and if you taped it, this makes it look like you wouldn't be able to put it on like YouTube or you wouldn't be able to use it, even if it was like a wedding, you know, like a home movie kind of thing. So I wondered if maybe that would be something to look at, because it would appear that without permission by the, the center, the center supervisor, and it even gives the center the right to charge for that. So I'm wondering, am I missing what the intent of that was?
Yeah, first of all, let me say, Commissioner Dickey, that to my knowledge, we've never actually used that policy. I think it was in there from the very beginning exactly to cover the kind of situation that you had mentioned. I think it's in there so that if we have somebody who's doing a broadcast from outside, which like I said, has never occurred, it simply requires them to make us aware of it, and then I don't know, and I can't think of a circumstances where we might turn them down, but it does at least require them to inform us and, and seek that approval, which again, assuming that there wasn't any issue with what they were proposing, we would grant that.
Well, Mayor, and is there some way you could change it to make it more narrow then? Because it really does look like if, you know, when the governor was here or something, if somebody had taped it and put it on YouTube, then they didn't get permission from the supervisor or something like that. It looks like they really wouldn't be allowed to do that.
That's, that's my understanding as well. I, I'm not sure how you would write language that would narrow it down to the point that you would, I think it's purposely intended to be fairly broad so that it does require them to come to the center supervisor and ask that permission.
Mayor Andrew, could you take a look at it? It's section 21, broadcasting and recording, and obviously I'm fine with just, you know, going ahead with this for now, but it would be something I would think could use a little work, maybe.
Ma'am, Mayor, councilmember Dickey, we'd be happy to take a look at it. I think that Mark's analysis of that section is pretty spot-on, and it's really talking about broadcasts originating. I don't believe that when this was drafted, anybody would have anticipated that with the simple smartphone now someone could upload to YouTube while they're sitting there watching in the audience, and I frankly don't know that we even want to tread into that territory. This was more setting up a broadcast facility from the lobby of the community center and broadcasting like a radio show or something else. So I, I think we can certainly look at it. I don't know that we're going to be able to find any magic in here that would exempt that out.
Well, Mayor, you know, the funny season is coming up, and if somebody doesn't like something that was taped and put on, and they say, "And we got you because you didn't ask permission from the supervisor," I just would like to know if there's a way to make it more narrow.
Fair enough. We can take a look at it.
Okay. Councilman? Elke?
Thank you. Mark, I just want to make sure I understand something correctly before I ask my next, my next question. Under section 15, that deals with consumption of alcoholic beverages, it's my understanding that if it's a private event, let's say for example, a wedding, somebody's having a wedding and a reception, that the, it's not a nonprofit entity, a private, private party, that they need to contract with a bartender service, a licensed bartender service, subject to community center approval for that particular event. Is that correct?
Councilmember Elke, that is correct, and typically that's done through the licensed caterer that they have. They typically would also have an alcohol permit.
Okay. And it's also my understanding, in an event of that nature, we've all been to weddings or different events and party celebrations. It's my understanding, in that situation, that we do not permit cash bars. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Could you explain to me the rationale behind not allowing a cash bar in that scenario, whereas a nonprofit could offer a cash bar in a different scenario if they're having a, an event, a dinner, or a fundraiser? Why would we want to prohibit a private entity from having a cash bar?
I believe that is in the code, the state requirements for liquor. I don't think, I don't believe that it was something that we interjected.
So that wasn't something by the town?
I don't believe so.
This is, a few years ago, we, we went back and looked at the liquor policies for the community center and tried to line them up as closely as we could with the state law, and this was one of those odd little nuances, and it's, you know, really there, it identified another gap in the statute. There isn't really a portable liquor license, but everybody who has bartending services seems to do that. So this is the best we could do to try and comport with the law and not get ourselves too far out there.
Interesting. Yeah. And the second, the second, if I may, Mayor, as far as security and safety personnel under section 16, I'm reading subsection D, and that any, just a, just a little history of that or just a summary of that section, security is required for any event where alcohol is going to be served, whether it's nonprofit or private, correct, Mark?
That is correct.
Okay. And the security personnel that the town requires is the sheriff's office, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and under subsection D, that the licensee or the individual that's doing the event sale pay for the security actually in cash no later than two weeks prior to the event date? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And that, that doesn't come to the town, that goes to whomever's providing security at that time, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Is there no provision for someone to use any other type of security if they wanted to?
We have attempted that in the past. The difficulty we have is they don't have the same enforcement authority that a law officer does, so that's why we have typically always used somebody from the local sheriff's department.
And what is the fee for that?
It is $40 an hour.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Councilwoman Dickey?
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry. Andrew, I do have another question. I don't see in the, in this where political activity is specifically addressed, and I was wondering, are people allowed to collect signatures or have political signs relating to upcoming elections? This has rules for the people that are leasing parts of a building, but how does that overlap with the, the public part? I think, you know, now people might start doing things like that, and we never quite get to know for sure what we are allowed and aren't allowed to do when it comes to signage or collecting petition signatures.
We, we have always treated municipally-owned facilities as off-limits for collecting signatures just because we can't ensure neutrality in that. There's no way for us to ensure that everybody has a fair shake at it because one organization may have reserved space and the other hasn't. With respect to campaign signs and literature, that's the same rule, and that's bootstrapped also onto our Title IX prohibition against the municipality using any of its resources to promote a ballot measure or a person on a ballot, and we don't want to get in the middle of any of that. So we've been pretty clear in our direction, this is, this is no man's land when it comes to that. We haven't been perfect in enforcement, but I think everybody's pretty good about it, and the organizations in town understand that they try to not have that happen.
And Mayor, you're talking about inside?
Inside, yeah. Outside, fair game. That's a, those are traditional public forum. This is, this is like the courthouse steps in the old public square.
Okay. Well...
Yeah, just to follow up on that. Now, if, if a group has rented space privately for an event, they can do inside that event as long as it's not infringing on other people outside, collect signatures, campaign literature, that sort of thing inside, correct?
That's been the nuance that we've, we've pretty much just rolled with, because there's, there's no way to tell an organization, congratulations, you've, you've rented space in our building, now you can't do what you intend to do. Because, you know, if a political organization rents space, that's the purpose of them being there. We just ask that organizations contain it wherever they're renting and not use the building generally, and for the most part, it's worked out fairly well.
Okay. I just have one last question, and that relates to the kitchen policy. I know in the past that some caterers have come in and they've brought grills and put them outside and cooked on grills. I didn't see anything in here about that. Is that allowed or not allowed?
It is allowed, but it has to be done, and again, served by the caterer. It cannot be cooked or served by someone who doesn't have the, the permits that are required.
So they can bring a grill, put it outside, actually cook on that grill then?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else? All right. If not, then I will entertain a motion.
I'd like to, oh, I'm sorry. Accept the consideration for resolution 2014 dash oh four, adopting the community center operation policies with the changes of section, what one was it, Mayor?
It was section three M. You got it?
Three M, suggested by the mayor.
Okay, I think it was three. Okay. Can I get a second?
Second.
And were there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Okay. Then, all in favor?
Aye.
Any post?
Mayor 7-0.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Number seven, Semiana Report on the Progress of Implementing the Council's Strategic Plan Goals and Operational Priorities for Fiscal Year 2013-14.
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council, again, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have on any specific area of the progress report.
Any questions for Ken? Okay. No action is required on this item, so we will go on to number eight, which is discussion and consideration of the council's strategic planning goals and operational priorities for fiscal year 2014-15 and specific initiatives recommended by the Strategic Planning Advisory Commission.
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council, as you know, that we discussed this item in a, in a council retreat last week and decided that it needed to come in front to, to a public business meeting to further discuss regarding the recommended, staff's recommendation as well as the Strategic Planning Advisory Commission's recommendations for modifications of the, our strategic planning goals for the upcoming year. So as part of the strategic planning process, the Strategic Planning Advisory Commission was called upon to make strategic planning goal recommendations to the council for the upcoming year. This happened back in December 17th, 2013, and it considered the recommendations, the council, and those recommendations are incorporated in the, in that attached chart that we included in the packet entitled Considerations for Strategic Planning Goals 2014-15. One, all strategic directions in strategic, the strategic plan 2010, council strategic planning goals for 2013, and three, SPAC's strategic planning goal recommendations for 2014 and 15, as well as the last, the recommendation was specific initiatives suggested by SPAC to accomplish those goals. It is a staff recommendation that council approves SPAC's recommendations for the 2014-15 strategic planning goals and also approve initiatives recommended by SPAC to accomplish the strategic direction specific C3, CR6, and I2. And staff recommends that council also approve the town manager's recommendations for operational priorities that were presented to you at the retreat for 2014. priorities that were presented to you at the retreat for two thousand fourteen and fifteen.
Okay. Thank you, Ken. Council discussion? Anyone?
Mayor, maybe we could invite Alan Magazine up to, if he has any words on this? He's the chair of SPAC.
Yeah, I think he sits in my chair, which I, he's tall.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, I wasn't intending to speak, but I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you have.
Does anyone have any questions related to this? Anyone? I guess everyone's read the plan and...
Well, I just wanted to know how you, you know, came down to narrowing it down, and just talk a little bit about the survey part, because I think we talked about that at the retreat, and maybe you can remind me the status of that also.
Councilman Dickey, we, we discussed, in particular, the three items that Mr. Buchanan mentioned. There was quite a bit of discussion about the idea of a citizen's survey. And you'll see that it has been amended from the past to indicate that we would look for other ways to get citizen input other than through a formal survey. There was some concern indicated about the cost of doing a town-wide survey, although we would really like to see one. Don't know of a better way to get a handle on, on people's attitudes and preferences, but the cost was a consideration. With regard to C, let me see, well, that was C six, C three, again, just continuing to get citizen and stakeholder input. It's critical that we get stakeholder input as much as possible, particularly, I think, given some of the changes going on at the chamber, for example, and other organizations. And so, an ongoing program of, of communication, being in touch with the stakeholders, and actually soliciting ideas and feedback is something we felt would be very important.
Thank you. Anything further? Anything else?
Mayor, if I may, Alan, thanks for all the work you do as a chair. And you guys do, do a wonderful job, as indicated by the product that you provide for us year after year. And thank you for your service. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Councilwoman Legere. Thank you.
Anything else?
Mayor, I, I don't have any other questions for Alan, but I do have a couple of questions on this agenda item.
Okay. Thank you, Chairman. All right. Then let's go to your question.
Sure. Part of the item that we're looking at tonight is obviously to approve the strategic planning goals as well as the recommended operation priorities. And I'm looking at that chart in front of me here in our packet, page one oh five of one hundred and fifty-four. And what I'd like to do is just take a few minutes and ask the town manager to flesh these out a little. And what I mean by that is that it's my understanding these operational priorities have been derived from our retreat. And of course, we didn't vote in the retreat, and in some cases, there was consensus, and in other cases, there was not consensus. And I'm looking at these, these buckets, if you may, and I think it's important for the general public, as well as myself, to have some clarification on what, what some of the parameters are in, in each of those particular areas. So if I may, I'll direct my questions directly to the town manager. Under the pavement management program, it's my understanding, and, and please clarify this if you can, that we're looking at a two-pronged approach here, which is, first, first is to, is to implement our maintenance program, which, which we've done this year, and we'll continue to do this, and we have funding set aside for doing that. It's with the LTAF funds and the HERF funds. It's also my understanding, it's not clear from looking at this, that the, the second piece of that was that staff was going to develop an asphalt replacement plan and a financial model for future asphalt replacement. I know we had an extensive conversation on that. And I just want to make sure that both of those elements are, your intention?
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council, yes, that's correct on both counts. We were to bring back, it was, again, it was a focusing effort on the second part. Again, we really focused on the first part, which was maintenance, which we accomplished, the council accomplished. It's now to start looking at the second part of that, which was the asphalt replacement. That was, in keeping with the two thousand and nine StanTech report, we will be bringing back some considerations for a, a plan in the future to the council for, to address future considerations. We are not going to be able to do it, you know, now with our current revenue source and pictures, and that's something that we went through with you about. But we could look at some possibilities that we have with some existing revenue sources in the future when they come available.
Okay. So my, Mayor, if I may, my expectation there is you'll come back to us with a financial model, if you may, for, for the future, and, and a plan attached to that, very similar to what you do with pavement management.
Yes, sir.
I mean, the, the maintenance piece.
That's correct.
Okay. Great. Thank you. If I may move on?
And just so the public knows what we're talking about, could you, maybe you could read all, all of them, so they, they don't have this in front of them?
Sure. Very good. In, in our packet, we have the, what's the, one, two, three, four, five recommended operational priorities. First one is pavement management program. The next one is economic development plan, Fountain Lake IGA, public safety, specifically Fire Station Two, and Facilities Reserve Fund. Moving on to the second one, economic development plan, just once again to clarify, clarify that, that particular area in terms of what staff will be focusing on. We're looking at implementing the business attraction strategy. We've, we've brought in our ED person for that purpose. Tourism strategy, we'll be implementing that beginning internally. I know this is kind of a rehash, but it's just important for the public, I think, to understand what, what that bucket entails. And with respect to the third component of the down, of the economic development plan, it was downtown, implementation of a downtown strategy. Could, could you just spend a minute and help me what staff may be looking at in that, on that bullet item?
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council, again, it's the third, I guess, the third leg of the, the third initiative of the economic development plan. We've done many, many plans in the, in the past regarding our downtown, but we haven't gotten serious about an implementation plan. And keeping the end in mind, what do we want our downtown to be, and then start working back? What we'd like to do in the future is bring some discussion back, work session with the council, to start talking about implementation plans on, on priorities, on what we think ought to be done with that specific area plan that was adopted within our, our general plan update, and start talking about those parameters again, and, and talk about the implementation strategies and, and goals and, and projects of what we think we ought to be doing so that we can chart those out. Because right now, we have, from what I can see and from my discussions with everyone in town, we've got a lot, we've got plans, but we've never really sat down and started talking about the implementation plans of those.
Okay.
Mayor, if I may, I'm just going to go through those if you...
Okay.
With respect to what you just stated, Ken, as most of us know, well, all of us know, sitting up here, and many of the citizens were involved in approving the, the vision plan, if you may affectionately refer to as the SWAB Act plan, is that something you see as part of this, this discussion or this implementation plan?
That is the specific area plan that was adopted by the voters.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Fountain Lake IGA, could you kind of just flush that out just, just a bit?
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council, that's, that's the ongoing discussions regarding a partnership with the sanitary district for the water quality in Fountain, Fountain Lake.
Okay. And how about the next item, operational priority, public safety, Fire Station Number Two?
Ongoing directive by the council to come back answering seven, seven questions, and, and looking at a, two alternatives for Fire Station Two to be relocated either on the Shea site or the Fountain Hills Boulevard Muskrat site.
And Mayor, if I may, you'll be bringing that back for discussion. Do we have a sense, a timeline on that? The reason I ask is...
Tomorrow.
Okay.
I mean, we're working on it as we go. It's, it's almost a daily event on a number of those areas. Again, we, we've, we've received the, some appraisals. We, we need to have a land, the, the land that we're trading is what we own in Eagles Nest. We need to do a, a land trade on that. There was considerable discussion on that at the, at a council meeting regarding this matter, as well as last week with the retreat. That, that's going to be required to be, be part of the settlement agreement amendments. And then we also need to bring down the cost and, and refine the costs on both sites, and answer the questions that the council asks us to, to do for more information, better information, to make a better informed decision.
Thank you. Sure.
Just because it's on that topic.
Nope, cool.
Go right ahead.
Thank you. I'm not running the meeting. Right. Thank, thank you. Ken, I heard you say that as far as the, the discussion about the, the land swap, did I hear you correctly that you said it's going to be required? Maybe this question's better for Andrew. Let me know. That it's going to be required as far as the settlement discussion? It's got to be part of that settlement? Because we had, had a discussion during the retreat about parsing that out and not making that a part of the whole. And where are we with that?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Elke, we, we haven't been able to extract the two because the, the timeline of moving forward with the full settlement agreement amendment is pretty oppressive. And so, at this time, they're still linked at the hip, and, and we understand from the, the council retreat that there's a strong desire to make sure that that doesn't become some sort of a bargaining chip against the town, and we'll be on guard for that. But we haven't really had any success at un-linking the two. We're just trying to get through the, the bulk of the agreement at the moment. It's...
Are you in a position to estimate when we might see an agenda item on that?
As a separate item or as the settlement agreement amendment?
Well, it sounds like it's going to be part of the whole.
The, right now, it's agendaized for the first meeting in March.
Okay.
So we're plowing forward, trying to get to that date.
Okay.
Does anyone else have any questions before we go on with the last one? No? Okay.
All right.
We'll go with the last one, then. Facility Reserve Fund.
Very good. Thank you. Facility Reserve Fund, and just for a second, back to the other one. I, I understand you're working on it. My intent was not to ask for tomorrow. I've just been contacted by a number of very anxious residents that, that live in that area, and they just want to know kind of what the process is and what the timeline is. So that, that's pretty much the rationale. As the mayor mentioned, our last one here is Facility Reserve Fund. What, what's the intent there for this fiscal year? What, what will staff be doing? What, what are you prescribing for that, that, that area?
Ms., Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council, again, there was some discussion regarding our facilities. We, we're starting to have some, some facilities that are, that are aging and are going to require some maintenance activities. Don't expect roofs and air conditioners and, and flooring and things like that to, to, you know, last a long time. So we need to start talking about a plan and an approach. There was one that was discussed a, a number of years ago. We were going to basically dust that off and, and, and the staff and make a, a review of it, and then bring it back for a further discussion for the council consideration.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Does anyone else have any question for Ken on operational priorities or anything else that's in this report? Anything else? If not, I will, do we have any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Okay. Can I get a motion from someone on this?
I'll get back to it.
As soon as you get back to it. Okay. Got it?
Mayor, I can...
Go ahead.
Okay. Mayor, move to establish the following as the council's fiscal year fourteen, fifteen strategic planning goals and operational priorities. Those are the five operational priorities that we went through with Councilmember Legere, and direct staff to pursue the initiatives recommended by the Strategic Planning Advisory Commission with respect to strategic direction C three, CR six, and I two.
Second.
All right. Is there any further discussion on this? Okay. Then, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor, seven zero.
Okay. We'll go on to number nine, which is discussion with possible direction to staff to revise the council rules of procedure to include a recurring item that allows the mayor and council to report on recent activities and current events. And this was requested to be on by Councilwoman Dickey, so I'm going to go to her and let her explain.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilmen, for assisting me with this. Over the last eight years almost that I've been on the council, there've been news to report, or an event, or meetings, and things like that, of things that are of interest, but never quite fit into a particular agenda item. There is specifically and narrowly provided by law, and as you can see, other cities have been offering this opportunity, to let each other and the public know of activities, current events, those kind of things. And there's a pretty easy way to do it here, and I use the other cities as a model. My, my recommendation would be then that we would change the existing agenda item that's before adjournment with a motion that I'm prepared to make, and I gave you all a copy of it, with the understanding that we, as part of the mayor's report at the beginning, we would continue, we would discontinue the specific notation of the review of recent events attended relating to economic development. And Andrew, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think we would need a motion to do that because I don't think that that is actually in our rules and procedures as stated. So we can check that. That's on page ten. And in addition to that, the, the economic development report would be more than accounted for by this inclusion of this language at the end, because it would allow for a report, but it would not limit it to the subject of economic development events attended. So that's kind of where I was going with it, put it together, gives us an opportunity. And then I, and in my motion, I'll discuss the idea of how we're not allowed to, you know, make any decisions or, or discuss those items.
Okay. And how do you, where did you figure your report goes in on this? When you, you're part of a actual established committee? Or are you thinking that's in the same position? Because what, my first thought when you discussed this with me was that we were, we were talking about things other than established committees, just you, you mentioned if you go to a meeting and you want to talk about that. Because I guess we have to be, we have to go to Andrew for that and be careful about items that are not agendaized, that could come up for a vote. How would we do that?
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, the, the proposal that's in front of you, I think, addresses that in terms of the treaty, much like it is, almost like a call to the public, that the items would be put out there as an update, but they wouldn't really be discussed because, you know, they're, they're not agendaized fully, and there's no way for anybody to know what the discussion's going to be. So it, it puts a narrow focus on the ability to do it. It narrows in what people can say. It just requires constant vigilance to make sure that we're staying within those lines, because the natural inclination, inclination is to want to discuss them when they come up.
Okay. Now, some of these other towns where we have examples, that's a little bit different because each one of the council people in some of these towns sit on the various commissions. Like, they'll have a council person that would sit on their senior citizens on a commission, or they're planning and zoning, and they use that time to report on the commission. And then there's, Scottsdale uses that time for, for discussion on whether there's an agreement on putting something on the agenda. So some of these are, are quite different from, from what you're talking about. So I'm not sure what, which one is the model?
Mayor, mostly Payson was the model.
Payson?
Yeah. That was, that looked the closest to what I was talking about, but the actual statute is pretty close to that, too.
Okay. So it's more like current events. Okay.
And Mayor, the other thing is like, so say someone speaks at, you know, Kiwanis or something, and somebody in the audience asks a question, or has a concern, or a compliment, or whatever, it gives you an opportunity to say, you know, someone's worried about this, or somebody thought this was awesome. You know, and you don't have to, you can't talk about it, but at least it's kind of out there because we're so limited on other ways we can communicate with each other. This is kind of a good way to say, oh, so-and-so, you know, really liked the ballet in the park, or something like that.
Right.
I mean, and we would, we would be self-limiting.
And Andrew, how would that work as far as council if we couldn't then talk to each other about what someone just said either, if someone brought up something like that?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, it would be treated much like any other item that comes to you in a call to the public. It's one-way communication, just here's, here's the message and no discussion. If it's further discussion that's necessary, we'd have to put it on an agenda, specifically note what the topic's going to be.
And would these have to be submitted in advance to...
My experience with other communities that do this is this is spur of the moment.
Instantaneous. Okay. Okay. All right. My, my preference, just for my report, the way I'm doing it now, I model after Scottsdale, and so I would like to continue to do my report in the beginning. And I'd also like to continue your committee reports in the beginning. And anyone else who is on an, comes on an established committee, I'd like those also to be in the beginning as far as the... to be in the beginning as far as the presentations because it seems that what we're talking about at the end is just, I guess, if you go to a ribbon cutting and you want to say something about that or something a little less related to what I've been doing and what you've been doing on your committee. If I...
Mayor, those reports would still be limited though even if it was at the beginning. So, basically, when you give your report, we cannot ask you a lot of questions.
Oh, right.
I guess what I would think is that if somebody has, you know, like Dennis is on the Maricopa County Air Quality Committee, if something happened that he thought he would like some input then, or something happened where I was or where you were or any of us, then we would have to agendaize it.
Right.
But this really, because if you look at the B part on page 10 of our rules and regulations on what the mayor's report is, it's really says, "The mayor may use mayor's report to read proclamations or conduct other ceremonial matters as listed on the agenda." So, I don't know whether that precludes discussion or not or if you'd have to add something then there if we were going to include something else in that section of the agenda. I mean, I'm open to whatever, but I just want to make sure that it's consistent.
Yeah, I always thought that my report was not open to discussion. Do you want to comment on that?
And Madam Mayor, I don't know if there is really a comment for me on that other than that the council rules that set out the, you know, the Order of Agenda, I believe, is 5.2, the section where it sets out, doesn't exactly accommodate for the way the agenda's being used right now. It's different than what was adopted in the rules, so I don't really have an interpretation for you on the different part. All I know is that we treat those the same way, the discussion flowing from that, because it's not agendaized, is prohibited just the same way as if it was called the public.
Exactly. Okay. Vice Mayor?
And do we need to make another amendment to the rules if we're operating differently than the rules say? I mean, are we kind of opening a little box here?
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor Hanson, that's entirely up to you all if you'd like to make that amendment. I think that's, part of the discussion here is just giving a better handle on the scope of these reports and knowing that other communities actually have a little more inclusive of all council approach to this was, I think, the intent, but it's up to you all.
Okay, well, yeah, I think it's a great idea that, I mean, I've always said at the end, does anybody have anything else to say, but I guess we got to make it official that, yes, anybody can say whatever they want to say at the end. I still will like to do my report in the beginning and I still would like any committee reports and if Councilman Brown is on a specific committee and he'd like to be that part of the agenda, I'd like to see that also when you attend a meeting if you'd like to report on that the way Councilwoman Dickey does. I'd like to see that and anyone else who gets on an official committee. So, do you want to put that in the form of a motion or...
Just an additional comment.
Sure.
Mayor, as we all know, we live in a great town full of a number of activities and during your mayor's report, you do update on different things that you've done. I think you mentioned traveling to China with Representative Kavanaugh and those sorts of things. And I think this would be a good tool for fellow council members to also be able to update on things that are going to have interest within the community and the other things that the council members, as the desire, I suppose, arises and to make sure that we're in compliance with that, because as Andrew said, we want to make sure we're in strict compliance with what our rules are and if this is something that we want to be able to do and our rules aren't, you know, don't allow for that, then we do need to adjust those rules to make sure that we're in compliance with them completely, whether it's your report or this amendment that we're looking to do.
Sure. Okay. Well, I think it's a great idea. Anybody else think it's not and disagrees with it? No?
I can make a motion to change that part of it anyway, yes.
Take it? Okay, go ahead.
All right. I'll move to change the current language from the Fountain Hills Town Council Rules of Procedure Section 5.2 H to read summary of council requests and report on recent activities by the mayor, individual council members, and the town manager. At the conclusion of the council, discussion direction to town manager, the town manager shall review with the council all matters raised at the meeting requiring follow-up from the town manager or town staff. The town manager may also suggest timelines for such follow-up. The mayor, individual council members, and the town manager may present a brief summary on current events and/or activities. The Arizona Open Meeting Law does not allow discussion or action on any matter mentioned during this summary.
Is there a second? Okay. And just to clarify, if we adopt it as is, can we still leave the first section where committee, the committee, domestic violence and maybe Councilman Brown's report and my report are still in the beginning, or do we have to clarify that right now also? Vice Mayor, do you want to answer that question?
No, I have a question.
Okay.
So, if that stays at the beginning, what are the time parameters if somebody wants to get something on there? I mean, maybe, you know, the one having it at the end, it could be something that just happened yesterday.
Right.
But if for the committee report, I mean, how far in advance does that have to be submitted then?
I think that that's submitted to Bev knows when those, she's contacted by Councilwoman Dickey, right, when she wants to give a report or you kind of figure when it's, you know, when the meetings are and then you, she tells you if she wants to give a report or not.
Right. It's about seven days, nine days.
Okay.
I think that's what it works out. Nine days.
Can I answer your question?
Well, it does, but it just seems kind of cumbersome.
Madam Mayor, along the same lines. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I apologize. It seems that the goal here is to give everyone an opportunity to just, I don't want to call it a shout-out, but give a, hey, by the way, such and such is going on. So, why would we need a formal submission if you look to somebody and say, hey, Henry, you're on the such-and-such committee, do you have any update? And he could say yes or no, and then take and just give a FYI, Fourth of July, boom.
We could. We could. I just, I just thought that the standing committees were important enough to be in the beginning, that's all. And I didn't know that Councilman Brown was on a committee and otherwise I would have asked him for a report. That's, that's...
Mayor, if I may, I don't think this precludes that. This just makes a change.
Well, Andrew, does it or doesn't it? You're being quiet.
I mean, if I, if you agendaize it, it doesn't preclude an agenda presentation.
Because at least those are agendaized items. Does that make a difference?
Yeah. Madam Mayor, if we have an item for which there's been an agenda submittal and we have a report on it, then it's open for full discussion and it's on the agenda listed so the public can tell what's going to be talked about. This is more for the things that by their nature are not going to be in that position. They're either not something that a council member feels the need to have a full staff report done or it's something that's timely and would never have met the deadlines to get on the agenda.
Okay. So, then, when, so when Councilwoman Dickey gives her report on domestic violence that allows for discussion on it because it's agendaized?
Correct.
Okay.
So, then, in that scenario, if, from, thank you, from a timing standpoint, if the, if the meeting was yesterday, we're using Councilmember Dickey, if the meeting was yesterday on the domestic violence council or commission and she wanted to give an update today, that wouldn't preclude her, but if we wanted a formal agendaized item to discuss it among the council members, that would then fall at the beginning of the agenda.
Right. Under the mayor's suggestion, that type of report would always be at the beginning if it were available.
And I think that's kind of set, you know, when the meetings are coming, so you can figure, you can always set it up after every meeting that you are going to give your report, so...
Yes, Mayor.
Does that work for you?
Part of this is because they changed the date and I was bugging Bev because I had all this stuff right in front of me and I really just wanted to do the report, but I couldn't do it because it wasn't within 72 hours. So, this would allow me to, if I wanted to go ahead and just do it at the end, I could do it.
Okay.
That's kind of where this kind of came from. Then I noticed all these other cities.
But your committee is so important that I think it should be agendaized.
Thank you.
Okay. So, we're good with that? Andrew? Yes? Are you going to say yes?
Do we have a second to the motion?
Yes.
Yes, we do. Okay. All right, then, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor, seven zero.
Okay, thank you. All right. Number 10, discussion with possible direction to staff relating to any item included in the League of Arizona Cities and Towns Weekly Legislative Bulletin or relating to any action proposed or pending before the state legislature. Ken, do we have anything?
Madam Kavanaugh, members of the council, no, we don't have anything as far as staff. If the council has any items that need to be brought forward that they've caught wind of or have been approached by for any pending proposed legislation that started this week.
Okay. Anyone have anything? No? Not yet?
They caught wind of a lot of stuff, but...
You're going to save it? All right. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? For adjourn. Thank you.